And then welcome to this edition of the Right Stand, 454 for, 2 against. That's the score in the Lok Sabha for the Mahila Nari Shakti Vandan Adhiniyam, or the Women's Reservation Bill. Ladies and gentlemen, the much awaited longstanding demand for this bill, the Nari Shakti Vandan Adhiniyam, has been passed in the Lok Sabha and it will come up in the Rajasabha on Thursday, where the bill will be debated for nearly seven and a half hours. Now through this bill, though this bill has been passed in the Lok Sabha, the opposition said that the bill is an election jumla by the BJP government and we will get into the details of what was said. Although there were certain amendments that have been rejected outright, what stands out is that nearly eighty odd MPs over the entire story, the entire strength of the Lok Sabha have not been, were not present or they abstained. So why were they not present? Why did they not find it important or necessary to be there? These are questions that will remain and that should be asked by those MPs. Because this is historic what has happened and it's bigger than 370, the numbers that have worked in unison. 370 was passed with 370 eyes, this is with 454 eyes and which is a huge thumbs up for more representation of women across our legislative councils, legislative assemblies and of course the parliament. Let's quickly look at what were the opposition's points of view today and where were the largest demands. The Congress demand was to add OBC quota and caste census. That's what they said, add this. Now in 2010, this is a world face done by the Congress party, both by Sonia Gandhi and Rahul Gandhi. Because this was the very reason why the bill was never introduced or it was listed but never tabled in the Lok Sabha. From the Rajasabha, it was brought into the Lok Sabha but never listed or never announced and that was the reason. And Sonia Gandhi is on record in the past while speaking here on CNN News 18, back then saying that many within my own party and within my own alliance are against it. They never brought it because at that time the Congress had a pressure position. Implement now, don't need delimitation is the next point of view. Saying there kyu, why don't you do it now? And they continue to taunt the government saying Modi hai to mumkin hai to karke dikhao. Now, the bill is anti-OBC and anti-Muslim bill is what Asaduddin OVC's point of view was. Then Trinamul Congress saying implement now. Show Modi hai to mumkin hai. Mauwa Moitra, this is what she stood up there and said. The DMK, it can be easily implemented for 2024, why don't you do it? Male-dominated parliament has betrayed women is what the Shiromane Akali Dal had to say. Charut Pavar faction said, why can't we have quota for OBCs? This question was being raised. OBC Muslim women must get quota was the Samajwadi Party's point of view. Meanwhile, the rebuttal came from the government and it was Union Home Minister Amit Shah who countered the opposition's charge and said that the BJP has worked and championed a women empowerment and also a women's reservation, lashing out at the Congress. The Union Home Minister saying Congress denies women basic welfare and has only raised slogans but did not act. Amit Shah also highlighting that census and delimitation will be held post the 2024 elections and they are needed for transparency. He also highlighted that the BJP has given a platform for OBCs and said that it was a BJP who gave an OBC Prime Minister. But the Congress's demand of including OBC is a complete 180 degree turn from their earliest stand. One-third quota, one-third quota for OBCs, it was not there in the 2010 bill. Quota for women over OBC women was not there in the 2010 bill. Quota within quota was not there in the 2010 bill at all. But why can't the bill be implemented now? That's one more question that stood out. This is what the government's explanation is. Implementation without census is not possible. Implementation without census and delimitation makes the bill illegal. Last census data is of 2011 and seats haven't changed since 1976. The 2021 census was delayed due to the Covid pandemic and the census has to be decadal so delimitation also has to be on that decade census. So had the census been put out in 2021, delimitation exercise could have happened or this bill would have come only the next decadal census, that is 2031 census. Latest data is available, bill will be implemented. As per Election Commission's criteria, women will actually get more reserved seats post-delimitation because the seats itself will increase, size of the Lok Sabha will increase. Changes in population ratio, India's population is over 140 crore now and which is far, far greater than what was estimated in the census in 2011. So clearly, population base has changed, it's not basis area but basis population density. That lot of delimitation exercises are carried out and that's why the census exercise has to be carried out, which Prime Minister Narendra Modi on the floor of the House also turned around and had said very clearly that it is his, he is going to treat it as priority and one of the things that he must finish. And that's why he said by 2027, the census exercise, delimitation exercise will be finished so that by 2029 Lok Sabha elections, the reservation is actually in place. Now the BJP has cited Article 82 and asserted that the opposition's demand is actually unconstitutional. Here is what Article 82 says, please understand this ladies and gentlemen. The Parliament enacts delimitation after every census. Boundaries of parliamentary constituencies are actually drawn. Re-allocation of seats is done after every census. It cannot be done, it cannot be done before that, that's the reason why. It cannot be done before that and the delimitation has to follow that decade census. So that's the story but here's all the action that happened through the day in the Lok Sabha.
Sir, mahilao ke liye ye aaraksan jo aaj, aaj ye sadam charcha ke liye le raha hai, ye aaraksan 15 saalo ke liye prabhabhi rehega.
Bharatiya Rashia Congress ki maan ki ye bill foran aman me laaye jaye, schedule caste, schedule tribe, OBCs ki mahilao ke aaraksan ki vyavastha ki diya.
A large chunk of India's women should have access to this reservation and that is missing in this bill.
Jaldi se jaldi jo humne kaas census kiya tha, uska data aap release kijiye aur agar aap nahi karenge to hum kar dalenge.
It is a deceive, you are deceiving the Muslim community by denying them this quota in this woman reservation sir.
Honorable Prime Minister, this is your moment to really show us all ki Modi hai to mumkin hai.
Ki a delimitation commission jo khasa judicial proceeding se chalta hai, har raaja me jaakar, har khetra me jaakar, open hearing dekhar, transparent padhdati se iska niiti nirgaran karta hai. Bharatiya Janta Party ke sanchad me 29% 50% sanchad OBC category ke hai. Comparison karna hai to ajaaiye.
Anand Ranganathan joins us this evening on the Right Stand. Charu Pragya and Taisin Punawala should also be joining us. Anand, your book is making a lot of waves and you're, and between hopping from one lickfest to the other, I hope you followed what's happening in Parliament, where parties and leaders are hopping from one position to the other between 13 years.
Good evening Anand, thanks very much and good evening to my fellow panelists who will be joining us. Three issues here. Number one, I think that was a brilliant primer of yours. I think explained everything in a very crystal clear fashion. The fact of the matter is that the proposal that was put before our legislature is almost 30 years old and in these ensuing 30 years, the BJP or the NDA has been in power for roughly half the year time. So if you want to blame the BJP for not getting this sooner, then what about the other half, which is 15 years, non-BJP? And 10 of those were prominently held the reins of power by the UPA, the Congress. What were they doing? The fact of the matter is that ever since it was proposed by Mr. Devagowda, the vociferous opposition actually came from the present members of the India Alliance or Indy Alliance. It was if I'm not mistaken, I think Mr. Nitish Kumar, who said we will never allow this women reservation. It was Mr. Charad Yadav, who said ye perkati, I think that's the word that he used very derisively. Ki perkati mahilao ke liye hai ye reservation aur ye jo humari grameen mahilayen hain, unse perkati mahilayen le jayenge, I mean basically meaning urban women with bob cut. The fact of the matter is, I am not against women reservation and it has been passed. So congratulations on that front. But one must ask why the double standard is. And first of all, I think just before I come to that crux of the issue, Anand, to explain it in less than a minute, I also want to say out here that BJP has not put a single foot wrong here. They are absolutely right about delimitation. Do not go into this without first knowing the demographics and the census of each and every constituency. And Mr. Amit Shah is absolutely right, if BJP does it or proposes it, then Mr. OVC will be jumping and saying left and right, saying oh, this is more communal bigotry on hand and you're purposely denying and making my constituency as a reserve constituency for women. So this has to be done in a very non-partisan manner, in an unbiased manner, which is what the BJP is doing. Where has it put its foot wrong, I do not know. But I want to say this, which is also, you can say a condemnation of all part. If you agree on the fact that yes, we need reservations for women, for Dalits, for SC, for ST, for any society, part of society that you feel was disenfranchised or discriminated against, fine, that's a moral call and I agree with that. What I don't agree with is the hypocrisy. Why aren't there reservations in Supreme Court? Why aren't there SC, ST, Dalit reservations in the Supreme Court at the highest benches or women reservations? Why? Why isn't there a women reservation in the High Court when women are so poorly represented amongst the judges? Why are only 3% of our Vice Chancellors women? Why are only 10% of our women faculty or faculty in universities women? Do we not require reservation there? So why this double standard that you can have reservations when it comes to placating vote banks? But when it comes to justice, you suddenly remember merit? Is that not wrong? So this double standard has to be addressed. Either you don't have it, you talk about merit, always merit or if it's a moral call, then you have it across the board. Why are you excluding the judiciary? That's totally wrong.
You made a few fair points there, Anand. When you, when you turn around and ask that what about reservation elsewhere? Why only as far as representation of people is concerned? And this was also conveniently done and said, okay, keep this out of us, don't take it everywhere else. The other aspect is there is no OBC reservation even current electoral system. So why do they want it included only as far as women is concerned? Is that a backdoor to Kambar can say, alright, why are you giving it only to women? Give it to menfolk also and make it, make sure that there is a separate OBC quota that stands and then that mooc moves over saying who will be OBCs? Bring in all caste creed communities who call themselves, who may have left Sanatan Pratha but they continue to hold on to their jati. Allow us also to be part of this OBC list. So this is a big game that is there, that's open, that's on. But Charu Pragya, thank you for joining us on short notice because there is a lot of up and down that's happened because of the extended proceedings in Parliament. But 454 to 2, that's the score in the Lok Sabha, that must make you happy. Despite all the voices that came out and said, abhi lao, kal lao, parso lao and they also said that nahi, OBC quota bhi lao, sab kuch lao.
Anand, you know I've been discussing this over the last two days. I have said that agar bill ko samartan hai to debate kyu aur agar samartan nahi hai to ye pretence ki. And I am very glad that in the end, even those who have very strongly objected to reservation for women could not do so on the floor of the House and they put it in favor. Now whatever were the circumstances that led us here, I want to thank every single parliamentarian, whatever party they come from, for voting for what is right and I want to thank my honorable Prime Minister for introducing this historical bill on a historical day. Now this was the first bill to be tabled in the new Parliament. I also think that all the debate and discussion around this bill stems from the fact that here is a opposition somewhat united, usually only united when it comes to opposing movie, that cannot be involved in any kind of positive politics. Over the last nine and a half years, I have not seen any bill, however fantastic it is, that got the support of the opposition MPs and that's sad. I don't think that's good democracy. That's just being very selfish and opposing for the sake of opposition is not good democracy. That being said, all their objections didn't make sense to me. In fact, especially when it was Mrs. Gandhi herself, who after the passing of the bill in Rajasabha had said that, aap dijiye aapko OBCs ko dena hai ticket aap apni party ki taraf se dijiye na. Aapko 33% tak limited bhi rene ki zarrot nahi hai. Who is saying that women are to be limited to 33%? I am saying give as many tickets as you want to, as many women as you want, from as diverse a background as you want. But just to drag on this conversation and try and make sure it does not happen again and it lapses again, I think that's not the right approach.
See, they don't want it to lapse but the fact is they are now putting the onus on the BJP and they're trying to bounce the monkey off their shoulder. But it also shows the fact that you did not show the political will. So how is it that when you were in government, you had a particular point of view and that changes when you move to opposition? And you try and turn around and say that this government is against OBC? You're telling an OBC Prime Minister that you are against OBCs. It's quite laughable there. Taisin Punawala joins us. Taisin, you've literally turned through traffic and made it in time to take the right stand. But please tell me, 454 to 2, at least the House of Peoples has taken the right stand with respect to this bill?
Anand, whenever I'm on the show with you and my fellow Anand and of course Charu, we are always on the right stand. Therefore, we are, we are sometimes right out of the action but right now we are right in the action. But here, many, many congratulations to Charu, to everyone, to my fellow citizens via news channel on this bill being passed. But let me say something that I told you on the day when, you know, I told you that the BJP is lying. They are not going to implement this bill. So Anand, when I told you and that clip had very viral and we spoke that day outside Parliament. Yes, the bill is passed but the bill will not be implemented, Anand. Nothing on the internet is recorded, say what I'm saying. Because the BJP is giving you vague dates. Anand, 2011 census report has not been put out. When will the 2021 decadal census be done? No date for that, you don't have it, I don't have it, Anand doesn't have it, Charu doesn't have it. After that, that record has to be put out. After that delimitation, after that this will come into effect. In effect, this bill will not see the light of day in 2029, not even 2034. That's point number one, one second, just one second. Just one second, just one second. Let you guys understand it. They are completely lying. If the BJP was serious, they could have said, okay, 2024, this comes in, 33% for women comes in and the delimitation will happen as it has to happen. Your question is right, why didn't Congress do it? Therefore, Congress is out of power, BJP is not done it. Point number two, I challenge the BJP. If you are serious about women's reservation, forget the Congress, Congress is not serious, they are out of power. You are serious, give 33% women tickets in 2024. Forget the delimitation, will the BJP give tickets? The BJP won't do it. The BJP is a hypocritical party which has never had a woman president. They are conning the country because they want this as the headlines. This bill passing means nothing. 2029, this bill will not come into effect.
Right, let Charu Pragya respond and then I'll bring in Anand Ranganathan also. Yes, Charu Pragya.
Both the counts please, Anand. Now, my dear friend Taisin used to say things like this for the Ram Mandir. Used to say mandir to balayenge but date nahi batayenge. To Taisin aapko main amantre de rhi hu, aap please mandir ke utghat me aaiye ka. Ye woi loge jo kaise the, dhara tinta shatal, koi hati hi nahi sakta. Hatti gayi na and everything is fine. So please don't think that a government with a good intention, with a, you know, the kind of a leader we have, he works with a vision. He's not going to bring about a bill when he does not mean to make difference on ground because he's continued to do that. You oppose triple salak as well, so that's, that's the first thing. So don't challenge this government because we have delivered on our promises and he will continue to do so. And the second part of your question, what was that?
Why did you, you delivered on your promise, why did you break out on farm laws? Farm laws were also brought in. No, 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 no. Second question. Second, no, 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 no. Let's not break away from the second question.
That is.
Let her answer, let her answer the second question. Let her, let her, no, she said what is the second question? Second question is, the BJP itself is hypocritical. One minute, let's not shout over there. The BJP itself is hypocritical, Charu Pragya. Because the BJP also has never given 33% of its tickets. Neither has the BJP had a woman president, party president.
So, you know, Anand, first of all, mine is the only political party in the whole country which has a 33% reservation for party posts for women. So Congress does not even have that. So out of the parivar, I don't know why you talk like you are very much in favor of women. Also, there is one more very hypocritical strand that Congress continues to take. Now, Taisin's friend Priyanka ji talks about ladki hu, ladshakti hu, but inke yaana sef, uttar pradesh ki ladki ladshakti hai. Punjab me ladki nahi ladshakti, Goa me nahi ladshakti, Karnataka me nahi ladshakti, Himachal me nahi ladshakti. And that I have a problem with. So if you have something to say, why not make a blanket across the nation?
For that, just a small statistic.
You're exposing yourself, my friend.
No, no, for that, just a small, small statistics. Forty percent hisse darri is what the Congress president, Congress had said. One out of 46 ministers in Himachal Pradesh and in Karnataka. And the other question, now this is not my question, this is your own. I should say, yeah, he is your brother, your own brother's question also. BJP spokesperson who is watching this and he's asking me, Anand, ask Taisin this. Are you okay with the government deciding which seats will be reserved and which will not be for women compared to the delimitation commission and the election commission? Are you okay with that?
One second. The point is, one-third seats could have come, no, 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 Anand, stop, Anand.
No, but, Taisin, tell me about Karnataka, Karnataka, Punjab, Himachal, also, na?
Let him answer. Chahzad has exposed himself because if you had the welfare, you could have done it by a lucky draw with seats coming and one-third could have 33%.
Lucky draw.
It could have come in, why not? Why not?
Lucky draw. Probably in India, is that how you are doing it?
Illegal, the whole process will be illegal. You cannot, people will go to court and challenge it immediately.
How? People will all, Taisin, please, Taisin, Taisin, let's not argue. It's done by draw, no, 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 let's not argue.
Can you hear me?
Do you know how corporations are done?
Can you please hear me?
Have it been challenged? Yes. Has it been thrown out?
Yes. Can you please hear me?
I heard it in Parliament.
No, what I'm, no, no, what I'm trying to tell you is that the census and that is decadal. So if you have the delimitation now and if the census does not happen by 2029 or the, beg your pardon, the delimitation and the census does not happen by 2029, then they'll have to wait for the 2031 census, immediately delimitation and then only implemented. So that's, so you cannot take 2011 and 2011. 2011 as base.
No, no, Anand, one second. I know, no, one second.
I'll come back to you.
You cannot take that shot at me.
I'll come back to you.
Tell me, no, no, tell me one thing. So why the 2021 census not done? What is the date?
Sir, the 2021 census was not done because the government answered on the floor of the House that two years, they started the process in 2019. It was Covid that disrupted it and they have not undertaken it because they want to do it after the 2024 elections. They cannot do census before the 2024 elections. You cannot carry both the elections. Let's not argue for arguing sake. Anand Ranganathan, one minute, one minute, one minute, Charu, one minute, Charu.
About the census.
One minute, Charu and Taisin, Anand Ranganathan. He's put his hand for such a long time. Thodi der baad bhai ka haath dhukega. Yes, Anand Ranganathan.
Tennis, tennis hell ho gaya. Now, you know, Anand, you may call Taisin as a human but I am convinced he is a cat. 900, nahin, 9000 chue khaliye aur aap, aap haj ke taraf ja rahi hain. You know, Taisin, Taisin knows that he and his party makes mistakes but he is absolutely silent. And he also knows that BJP will make the same mistakes. He waits for it. When BJP makes the same mistake, aare, ye dekho, BJP ki galti. Apni galti nahi dikhani, BJP ki dikhani hai. I ask him, yes, that question needs to be answered by Charu, that why did BJP wait for nine years to bring this bill? Legitimate question. But I ask you that question as well. Why did you wait for nine years? When you are saying that you were one of the proponents of the bill? Not just nine years, Taisin, 16 years. So number one. Number two, and I say this again and again, I'll put you on the dock straight away. Are you going to challenge each one of your 28 members of Indy Alliance and say that we are going to have 33% reservation for candidates for the seats that we are fighting for? If not, then I'm sorry, you are no longer part of the Indy Alliance. Have the courage to do so. BJP ko challenge kar raho aur khud chupo. And number three, Anand here, I want to say about the hypocrisy of everyone else, not just political party. You know the shocking statistics? Only 12% of women judges in High Courts or judges in High Courts are women. None of the 25 chief justices of the High Courts are women. Only 10% of Supreme Court judges are women. To pehle apne jhroke me dekho bhai. And I want both these parties, jo ki Supreme Court se darte hai, ye kahen aaj dhanke ke chot pe, ki Supreme Court, Honorable Justice Chandrachord, we want women reservation on the Supreme Court and the High Court. Say it.
So benches can be constituted based on the balance but that is again on caste and the community but never on gender. But this is the bench that also espouse the concept of gender fluidity. But we are digressing. Let's come back and say draw of lots. 2024 me draw of lots ka idea tera hai Taisin Punawala.
It's what happened.
And saying it is not going to be illegal. My first thought is, I will be the first person to go to court and challenge this.
You will get thrown out.
You cannot have, no, representation of people cannot be at, cannot be a draw of lots. The other point is, sir, your own alliance will throw you out. Your own alliance will go to court. The other third, the third point. So far, no party till date ever talked about OBC quota and that means when I say the leading party, the Congress or this one. In the electoral process itself, the reserved seats are only for SC, ST. It's not there for OBC. Why this sudden OBC demand in women, that's another question. Charu Pragya wanted to say something, yes, Charu Pragya. Why did you wait nine years?
Because sir, you know, Taisin, Taisin was saying that...
When I say you, the BJP government.
Why, why the census process was stopped? Covid was one reason. The other reason was the fear mongering and misinformation which was being spread during the CA protest. You cannot forget that, you know, the kind of statements that were coming out of that protest site, Taisin. All of the people there were fear mongering and thinking, ki census ho gaya to hume desh ke baar fek diya jaayega. And it was your party and the friends of your party which supported this narrative. Now you know why you need to allow the government to do its job and not always just be someone who becomes extremely negative, extremely negative. And Anand sir, I want to agree with you and yes, I know our Parliament is eventually also just a reflection of our society. And that's why we see lesser women in Parliament because we see less women on board seats, we see less women surgeons, we see less women senior councils. All of that needs to change but that will change by empowering women every day. Making sure she has a good education, she's skilled, she can pick up a loan. When she wants a break from work because she's become a mother, she has that long six month leave and she's paid for it. And these are the things that my government is working on every day on practically empowering women with tools which help them.
One thing which we are very proud of here at Network Itin that we just did Rising India She Shakti where it was 90% women and 10% menfolk. 10% and it was perhaps one of the most landmark and we are very proud of that and we should have more of that, I agree. But my point is, Taisin Punawala, none of the MPs today from the entire Indy Alliance, even the BJP, ever said, bill or no bill, 24 ke chunao me 33% of our candidate will be women.
I told you BJP are hypocrites.
No, what about Indy Alliance? 26 padi hai wa, vo kuch nahi hai.
But once again, just one second, just one second.
At least some of them have it in their constitution like the Trinamul, if I correct, if I'm wrong, yeah.
Let me just correct Charu on one thing and it's a very important correction. Charu, the census comes under the Census Act. The NRC comes under the NRC Act, they're two separate acts. Just because they were both collecting data does not mean they were not one. They were not one.
I'm just saying wisdom, wisdom, I don't know, I'm just saying, usi baane bol do, ye bhi bol do, ye bhi bol do, ki CA 2019 is different, NRC is different, census is different.
I am telling you this government didn't even notify it.
You people, you people conflated everything.
They scored a sand goal.
Anand Ranganathan, please tell me, Anand Ranganathan, please tell me, Anand Ranganathan. Anand Ranganathan, who wasn't, wasn't, wasn't this entire grouping committee?
I have gone to court instantly.
Wasn't this entire committee, the one which said, CA laoge to NRC pe fark padega, census laoge to CA, aaj sab pe fark padega. Abhi, abhi, abhi. Now, inme se ek buland awaz yaar, it's taking, finally taking the right stand. Saying they are all separate issues, don't mix them.
They always take the right stand but ask them, I didn't notify.
Anand Ranganathan, fine, I'm going to wind up.
Said that in 2019. Taisin, you should have said it in 2019. I would have been very proud of you.
I went to court, you didn't notify because I went to court. There, Charu Pragya, those who said, ki kya zarrot hai, aap khud hi candidates ko ye de dijiye, meri party me hi, they are against it in 2010. Today they are saying give OBC quota. So they can change after 13 years, you should allow him, at least he is changing after only four years. No, no, I'm still in court, I have this position after four years. Anand Ranganathan.
As I said, my job here right now is to convince you, Anand, that Taisin is a cat. You know, he was castigating Narendra Modi just now. He was, he was actually browbeating Charu by saying, how dare, how cowardly have Narendra Modi to have gone back on the farm law? Aare bhai, farm laws were in your manifesto, Taisin. Point number 11, point number 19, you had even the contract app. Why did you go back on that? Because we didn't have, because we didn't have the holding clause, the holding clause.
You didn't have the, 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 the.
One second, the holding clause.
Those words cannot be used here on the show, sir.
Didn't have the holding clause, the holding clause. They allowed for holding, that was the point.
I still think farm laws were great and because of your interference.
Come on, Anand, don't be selective. Better than that. Not being selective, not being selective.
The holding clause was not.
The fact of the matter is, all those voices who stood there and made those noises were the ones who were opposed to those very objections points raised just about 13 years ago. So if they have done a complete world face, then it is, it exposes them too. The fact of the matter now is, in the Rajasabha, the opposition will be bolder. Will they say something more? Will they say something constructive beyond what has been said in the Lok Sabha today? And the other aspect is, in the Rajasabha, will we get a commitment and a timeline that this bill will come into fruition before Lok Sabha 2029? The Prime Minister indicated that when he introduced the bill in the first day of parliament session in the new parliament. But let's see if that is reiterated and in concrete words and in commitment coming forth. Then also we'll have to wait and watch. Will the opposition work hand in hand with the government to ensure the census happens?[1754.94]